Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of Boston Borough Council's Ovivier Scrutiny Committee. I'm Paul Gleeson and I am chairing the meeting today. Unfortunately, my vice-chair Neil Grayton is not well and isn't present. Before we start the meeting, I just need to run through a few housekeeping details. I would like to remind everyone in attendance this evening that the meeting is being streamed on YouTube. Mobile phones should be turned off or switched to silent mode. Please ensure you use the microphones system at all times when addressing the meeting. You do not need to move or adjust the microphones. Simply raise your hand as usual, wait to be called, and then press the centre button to activate your microphone. I will then activate the mic from this end so that you can be heard. When you finish, you press the centre button again and that will end it, or if need be, I can. As there's no members of the public, we can leave the next bit. Please be advised that any abuse or intimidation of any kind will not be tolerated. Any disturbance will result in the meeting being adjourned. Anyone who is deemed to breach these requirements will be warned and asked to refrain. And if the behaviour persists, they will be required to leave the meeting. Now we move to part one of the agenda preliminaries. Apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. We've received apologies from councillors Patsy Marson, Barry Pierpoint and Neil Grayton.
Thank you. Declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare any interest in respect of any items on the agenda? Minutes. Do I have permission to sign the minutes of the meeting of Ovivier Scrutiny held on the 2nd October 2025? Thank you. I'll sign them at the end of the meeting. Public questions. Are there any questions from members of the public received two clear working days prior to this meeting?
None for this meeting, Chair.
Thank you. Agenda items. Annual monitoring report, South and East Lincolnshire Partnership Council's community lottery scheme. Our first item of business this evening is the annual monitoring report of the local lottery scheme and will be presented by the group manager of community leadership, Nicola Holdenis.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. So, the South and East Lincolnshire Council's Community Lottery has now been in operation for three years. As agreed at the time of creating the scheme, this report is brought forward to give members an update on its annual activity. To recap, the community lottery supports local good causes, community groups and clubs to raise funds through the sale of a lottery ticket. Each ticket costs £1 and 50% of this is kept for good causes. 10% goes to the central fund pot, 20% to the prize fund and 20% to the running costs. For Boston, there are 22 good causes that are currently part of the scheme. Over 91,000 has been raised to date for good causes across the partnership. It should be noted that the running cost to the council is currently £295 per year and this is covered within the 10% central fund pot. The rest of the central fund income has been used to support and promote community groups across the borough and last year was used to run our Boston Heroes campaign. Conversations with the portfolio holder will continue as to what we will use this year's central pot fund for. I wanted to draw your attention to a number of measures that are in place to mitigate the risk of problem gambling. These measures include: sale tickets of a maximum of 20 per person can be purchased in any one transaction. There is no instant reward or gratification for paying the community lottery. Players can set up self-exclusion agreements to prevent further participation and Gatherwell have a number of processes in place to prevent anyone at risk and identify those through their systems. Both Emily Spicer and myself are licensed holders for the community lottery and quarterly returns are submitted to the gambling commission to ensure that the running of the lottery meets their standards. That's a review of the report and I'm more than happy to take any questions.
councillor Scoot?
Thank you, Chair. On average, how many players do we have, please? And how is the scheme marketed? Because it seems a very good scheme to me.
There are over 1,000 players per week and we market mainly on social media. We have kept our marketing to a reasonable level. We're very mindful that it's also not to promote the gambling element, but it is a good scheme for local good causes. Have produced some leaflets and I've brought some along with me today because I think a fair point is that the majority of the advertisement is done online. So taking that into account, we've produced some leaflets. I've also put some in the members lounge as well for people to take away and pop out.
Thank you. Councillor Owens?
Okay, thank you, Chair. I know that on the surface of it, this is producing a lot of good money for good causes, but just a couple of questions, if I may. You've got here 3,272 winners, of which 309 have won between 25 and 250, but there's a 25,000 and a 2,000 prize there. So my question is, what have the other 2,963 winners received? Is it just the three extra tickets? So you haven't given away a £25,000 prize yet?
No, we haven't, no.
Nor a £2,000 one?
No, only up to 250.
Could that not be construed as false advertising?
Yeah, with the percentage. I mean, it is a lottery. I'm just thinking how many numbers that you have to win, a certain amount of numbers to win the draw. That's across the country. So they do have winners across the country that win the 2,000 and have won the 25,000 and I can get back to you with those figures rather than me looking at them now. But the odds of winning a £25,000 prize are a million to one.
Okay, all right. I get that.
And to win the £2,000 prize is 55,000 to one.
Just one more question. The Gatherwell get 20%, which works out around about £10,000 a year. So why has Boston Borough Council being charged £295?
£295?
Yes.
Yeah, that is, it's not a charge for Gatherwell. It is, we have to be part of the lottery commission and also we have to pay a fee to the gambling commission, which comes to just under £800 between the partnerships. So that's what that fee is. We don't actually pay Gatherwell.
Okay, I was actually aware of that. I'd forgotten. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
councillor Pryke?
You're on. Thank you, Chair. Do the good causes request particular amounts themselves or does someone else decide how much they're going to get?
They get to keep 50% of their sale of their tickets. So depending on how many tickets they sell, depends on how much money they make. We have a couple of good causes that make over £200 a month, but we also have a number of good causes that only make maybe £5 a month. So it really depends on how many tickets they sell. The onus is on them to advertise their scheme and you can log on to the website. You can click on the good cause that you want to support and then you can buy a ticket that way.
Is there any monitoring or control of how anybody else promotes the lottery? So for example, the ex-scout troop of Curtin could flood Facebook.
They certainly could do, yeah, and that would be fine for them if that's how they wanted to promote their scheme. We don't promote individual schemes through our social media. We do promote the lottery and we also promote the advantage of community groups joining the lottery, but we don't promote specific community groups. We leave that up to them. We do annually check if anybody hasn't sold any tickets and contact them to see whether they want to still be part of the scheme or whether they want to come off our system.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? councillor Izzard?
Yes, thank you for this. Just two points. So the first draw was done in November 2022. Compared to that, how many tickets do we sell now compared to that first draw? Do we know roughly?
Yeah, there was a slight drop off from the first week, but to be honest, they're fairly static every week. We don't seem to see much fluctuation. I think there is an opportunity for us to get more good causes on to the scheme, which would then obviously in turn increase the sale of our tickets and that will be a priority going forward. We'll make sure we've got a good communication plan with our comms team to make sure that we highlight the benefits of the scheme.
So year on year, have we sold more tickets or has it stayed steady from?
It has stayed steady, but I can certainly get you the information year on year from the system if that would be useful for you.
Okay. And the other thing is, obviously, how many tickets do we sell in the Boston area compared to our other local areas? Or is that too difficult to?
It's too difficult to pull off who comes from where in terms of ticket sales. But as I say, we've got 22 good causes and I would be able to pull off how many tickets we sell of those groups. So I can definitely get that information to you as well if that would be useful.
Okay. And I think, just like everyone round the table, we should go out there and communicate it more in the new year and try to build it up a bit more.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I do need to dial away from the local community club, whether I should have put that down before I'm ready.
Anybody? Oh, councillor Elroy?
Just following on from councillor Izzard. Is there a limit on how many good causes can actually sign up?
No, there isn't a limit, no.
So it's advantageous for as many as possible then to sign up?
Yes, it's free. It's free of charge. They can just apply via the website. There's a number of checks we need to make our end just to check that it's a constituted group or a charity, that all their finances are in order and then, no, they can sign up.
And is there any follow-up as to what the money is actually spent on?
There isn't, no, no.
So once they get the, the good cause gets the money, it's up to them to spend it on?
Yeah, they're all charities or constituted groups. We do do that check, but we don't follow up what they spend the money on.
And also, do the ELMs, do you, it's Gatherwell, is it, at the moment?
Yes, it is, yes.
Do you look for other ELMs? Do you compare, you know, compare the market dot com?
We have, we did at the beginning when we set the scheme up, but no, it's a rolling contract and we've just entered into that contract annually with them.
So it's an annual contract? Okay, thank you.
Anybody else with any questions? Yeah, well, thank you, Nicola. Very detailed report, I think. It's a very good news story. As I say, the only one thing I think it is, we do need to get the story out there a little bit more. We've been asked to note this, which we've noted and our comments obviously were recorded. That's all we're asked today. So thank you very much for your time on that.
Yeah, well, yeah, if I may, I'd just like to point out that this was something I did actually raise with the officers when I had the portfolio meeting, that it would be good if we could get this out a little bit more into the community and hence the production of these leaflets.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We cooled a minute now. Thank you very much, Nicola. So we now move on to pages 29 to 56 of the report. So it's the quarter one, 25-26 performance report, which is our second item of business. And it's presented by the group manager, insight and transformation, Suzaro.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the usual quarterly report that you receive. This is for quarter one to the end of June and this is here primarily to feed into your work plan. So if there are any areas of particular interest from the report, it might be, if there are simple questions, then I can take those tonight. But if there is some more depth that you would like to go into on any of these areas, then we can bring that up in your work programme. I will just talk you through how some of this works, just as a reminder. So if we go to the first page in the appendix with the red amber green, you'll see at the top there is the occupancy rate of the industrial units. That's an amber measure at the moment. So it might be that if that is of particular interest to you, you might want to know a little bit more about that. We've put some commentary in there. So that explains that there was one unit that was empty at the end of quarter one. That's out of 28 units that the council holds and a new tenant was scheduled to sign a new lease in July. So you'll have an update on that in the next quarterly report. Then you'll see there are some green measures in there around planning. So again, that might not be an area of particular interest, but just because it's green doesn't mean that you might not want to know about how that performance has improved or a little bit more about how that works. And then if we just look for a red measure, just to give you an example. So if we move a couple of pages down, there's one there around decisions around homelessness. That's a red measure which isn't on target at the moment. It's a brand new measure that we've put in place underneath the others just to keep a track of how we perform in terms of hitting our targets around making those decisions. So the other measures are green, but this one is just to go into a little bit more detail. So again, if homelessness was an area of interest, it may already be on your work programme or it may be something that you would like to pick up. There should be commentary for all of the other red measures to explain where performance is off track. But if you have any questions about any of the measures, I'd be happy to try to answer those tonight or take that away and come back with some more detail. Or if you'd like to know more, then it might be an item for your work.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? councillor Izzard?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just the one. Obviously, a red one on page 37, isn't it? And it's the percentage of household waste collected from recycling. But I noticed that we've got a figure of 45% as a target, but we've not really managed to reach 45% in any of them. So is the target too high or do we need to do some more drastic work to try and increase that?
Thank you. Switched it up. So the target is based on our regional performance that we need to hit. So it is a target that we aim
Thank you. Switched it off. Um, so the target is based on our regional performance that we need to hit. So it is a target that we aim for. But we do know that it's a very stretched target and there's a lot of work that we need to do to be able to hit it. And there is a lot of work going on, as you know, with the environment bill. And I think that that will assist us. What we're going to do in future is only report this on an annual basis. Which is why you've got it in quarter one. We'll have it in the next quarter one. But there is a lot of work going on behind the scenes and I'm sure committee get regular updates around. And what's happening, what's going to happen in future. I think food waste will impact on that and all the other work will impact on that target. But we have consciously not reduced the target because it is the right thing to aim for, but we aren't there yet.
Are there any other questions? Councillor Austin? Councillor Austin.
Right, I've obviously come in at the right time. Obviously, I'm interested in industrial units on the industrial estate. Um. They look as though they're coming up steadily. How long have we had the units?
I don't have detailed figures, but I can get hold of the details for you about the industrial unit if I get some more information.
Mm-hmm, of course. Um. The only one I know of at the moment is the men's shed. And, um. And of course, one itself is used by BTAC, isn't it? So, um, am I correct?
Don't know.
Not that I'm.
No.
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh. Well, there seem to be. Maybe I was mistaken or I was actually shown into that one. Um, um, but obviously we've got to have homes on there, haven't we? So, um. Um, but otherwise I think it looks encouraging. How long have they had? Um. How long have we had units there?
I, I don't know. I will get some more information together and circulate it to the committee. So I will find out some background on that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to seem a complete nutty geek, but.
Know the details, but.
No, but obviously, um. The industrial estate falls in my ward, so I am interested. Um, now the other thing, of course, I'm interested in, as many of you will be aware, is homelessness. Um. But I think I will. Um. That was the red one, wasn't it? I lost it. Um. Have you got any comment as to why it, you know, we've got red or is it because it's not been recorded for long enough yet to? To give us any idea of what's, what the trend is?
Yeah, it is a fairly new measure. And so it will take a little bit of time for us to, to understand the trend. But it was put in deliberately for us to understand our part of that process and how quickly we make decisions. So we're able to react to those measures and make sure that we're following the process as quickly as possible to hit that figure. So I would expect we'll have a better update in the next quarter, which will come to your future meeting. And I'll make sure there's more commentary in there to.
Trustee of Centrepoint Outreach. Okay, so that just wants marking down, please. Thank you, thank you. Apologies for being late, but I had another appointment.
Are there any other? Questions? Again, in my view, this is a really detailed report. And I think the point Suzanne makes about. Is actually being used as one of the top mechanisms we should use. You know, to, to look at our own work programme. So again, you know, when we come, when it comes around on the next time we get the next report. I think we do need to maybe add a, a little bit more thought into what are those items we need to pull out and, you know, look into more detail. But thank you for your information on that. And obviously for when you come back to us on the information with the industrial units. Thank you for that. Sorry.
Just add on.
Yep. Yep. So we'll, we'll add that on and follow that up as well. So thank you. Thank you for your time with us Suzanne. Yeah, oh yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I've got to, I've got to push a button.
Thank you Chairman. Yeah, we'll gradually get used to them, aren't we? Um, yeah, I just wanted to follow up from Suzanne's comment. So on page fifty-seven and sixty, you've got work programme for the committee. Um, that's populated, I think, right through to our meeting in March. But there is, there is space, just following up from the chairman's comments, there is space for, for scrutiny of further items. Uh, in that programme. But there's also some pending matters on page sixty that we'll need to consider for the work programme moving forward. And the final point I just wanted to make really, coming back to considerations of what this committee may wish to scrutinise moving forward is. We've included in the, in the agenda pack, the forward plan for the council. For these are key sort of policy decisions that are coming through the governance mechanism over the coming months. And again, it's a good place to, to look ahead, to see sources of, or topics. Um, of policies that are currently under development that you may want to bring forward to this committee to, to, to inform the development of those, of those policies. So it's worth, it's worth a look on pages sixty-one to sixty-nine. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, I must admit, I regularly check the forward plan, but it is something that all councillors really. You know, if you, if there's something on the forward plan that you think we as scrutiny should be looking at, please just get in touch with me and we will make sure it. Is an item that we do get a report on. Councillor Izzard.
I, I'm not sure whether it should, can we raise it there? But. When we're looking at the forward plan, the plan for neighbourhoods to seek approval for submission of the plan for neighbourhoods for Skegness, Borden and Boston. Would that have been the meeting that was unfortunately had to be cancelled on Tuesday? Here, was that planned for neighbourhoods as well? In which case is it going to be pushed back?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that actually, so I'll, I'll need to, I'll need to come back to you. We, so you're saying that it was, it was on the, on the programme to come here. I think it's.
No, it was a separate meeting that we.
We, there was meant to be a briefing this week that was cancelled because of the bomb thing.
Right. I've, I've just been told.
Next week. Okay, it's been rechecked. Thank you. Councillor Sharp.
Thank you. Are there any other issues to be raised, Councillor? Also, I thought you indicated, sorry. Oh, no. So thank you for your time with that Suzanne and we'll move on to the next item. Thanks. We've, obviously, again, we've been noted, we've noted the comments made and was it Suzanne said that she will come back to us on various things on that. So we now come to the work programme. So, um. Are there any other issues to be raised on the actual work programme itself? You've got a copy in front. Obviously, we've had the sort of conversation just had about the forward plan and things. Um, with one thing, Councillor Price?
With the Chair's permission, I could give the scrutiny committee an outline of how I anticipate the town centre task and finish group.
That'll be great.
To operate and report.
Yeah, that'll be very useful, thank you.
Members will remember that the last one meeting. Uh, I invited any other members of council to join us in our future work. And councillor Baxter has volunteered himself for that. Uh, apart from councillor Gilbert resigning from it because of his new position. I anticipate the group to continue as it has been working up until now. Uh, and I am proposing to call a meeting for maximum availability in the next fortnight. For all those people. And that we use that meeting to identify the outstanding issues that we don't think we've got. Adequate or any answer to about the town centre. We'll obviously seek answers to those points and. Meet again to decide if we're happy with them. It's at that point, I would hope the task and finish group could produce a draft report to come to scrutiny. As soon as possible after that. But that's subject to the agreement of the task and finish group. But that's broadly what I'm going to put to people.
Thanks for the update on that. And yes, so it's an important piece of work you're doing well. So we do need to focus in on that. But we've noted that and members are happy otherwise with what the work programme is? Yeah, thank you. So. To consider resolving that under section one hundred A four of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two. The public and press be excluded from the meeting for the following items of business. On the grounds that they may involve the likely disclosure of external information, sorry, exempt information. As defined in paragraph three of part one of schedule, what twelve A of the Act as amended. Do I have a proposal? Thank you Councillor Scoot. Seconded, Councillor Izzard. All those in favour, please show. Carried. Thank you. Good. We need to. We just wait a minute while we. Things are stopped.